She's gonna text you later. I saw what I said, I've all seen one today, so I'll find out if we can tell it out there. I think that's why we had the flight this morning. He's saying they.
Did you guys need to. Zach.
That was a laugh.
Did you hear what he was saying?
Yes.
It wasn't supposed to be.
Oh, I want to watch that house to the returns and lots of.
Yeah, I've tried that product, but I don't know if I'm in actual. I used to be in it as a west. But you're gonna have your Santa Claus outfit on, yeah.
No, I know.
The world.
Very importantly, brother.
Did you grab a.
It has to be.
Did you grab a. Plenty of.
It's my boss, he'll call this meeting to order her.
Well, maybe I need to go over.
So thank you for this day, thank you for bringing us all here together, just because of this, just we go through this meeting and what we think we do. And she's coming.
Join me in the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a make a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty of twenty twenty five. Say it.
All in favor, Brian? Seth?
Yes.
And Rhonda? Uh, yes. Miss the lady, the items from the audience. Does any of anything people want to say? Now, if you do have something to say, you come up here so that the recorder can get your name and everything.
Stu Preston and District Three down towards Parkin's. Uh, have appeared here a few times before. With the group that we loosely call ourselves, the States of our Sunset People. We're all coming at things from different angles, but what we shared in common is we're a little concerned about some of the things going on. Windmill, windmill blades, transmission lines, all those things. I try every time I speak to remind you commissioners that I'm not against everything. But personally, I think some of the stuff going on is not gonna last forever like the windmill happened then. And so we've been trying different ways to at least slow that down where we have a little time to figure out what's going on. And so I brought a copy of a statute from Title Nineteen that the way I read it appears to give you all the power to do a lot of things. And I'm going to ask you now if you'll run this by your assistant district attorney and see one of the theories that we're considering. From the statutes, perhaps the Payne County Commissioners will pass a resolution that requires some kind of an end of life bond or something for these big commercial projects. So that we don't have them decommissioned like we've seen with the oil wells years ago, all those things, and just be abandoned. And what's worse is the oil field, at least they left some steel behind that adds some value. But windmills and windmill blades are gonna be a big burden on whoever's stuck in them. So anyway, I believe you all have a copy of this statute. I will give one to the clerk and hopefully you guys can find some way to do what we've been talking about. So.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, that's awesome.
Anybody else?
Dana Lawrence, I'm District Three. So I'm fine with this anger. Concerned, well, I'm more than concerned, I'm vehemently against all of this. Water, the entire gamut, I think everyone is well aware of what all the pitfalls are. There's, this thing has been rushed. On a five various entities, the city of Stillwater, correct? These NDAs, they're being used to negotiate. This whole business is a complete subversion of democracy. So my primary thing that I would like to do is remind people who they represent. They don't represent corporation. Who are here to do whatever they please, basically, and that is what is happening. Let's be straightforward about it. I think the harms in the long term are way too much to even contemplate. Our entire way of life is being threatened in a major way. Water is something I'm very concerned about. I'm not reassured by what someone at the city had to say about that, not reassured at all. We know what the drought, history of drought is here. Even without those demands, I've had my water wells run dry. And I'm not a farmer or rancher. We really have to preserve our little way of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Kathy Atkins and I'm a member of the Payne County SOS Group and I've been here several times before to continue to ask the county commissioners to use their powers to do something to help us out. Where our state legislature is failing us and things are happening so fast since the previous speaker just said, everything seems to be happening in rush. There's nothing we can do to stop it and that's wrong. I'm not just for the world or the view, I'm also for the urban or the city view. I'm a District Two resident, I live in the city of Stillwater, but I'm just as concerned as everybody else about what's happening in that county. Stu spoke about the statute that was recently uncovered. I hope you'll take a good look at that and take full advantage of the power to that exist. You know, I think people believe it. And so I'm just trying to encourage you to really strongly consider this and help us. I still am concerned about the moratorium proposal, giving full consideration and maybe taking the time to look at that thought a little bit, I appreciate that. We appreciate the commission, I've been coming this means I've learned a lot about you and I know that you have our interest in mind, so just please take a good look at this and continue to consider our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm back for the date opening at nine thirty. I go to seven A, discussion possible action, use of the courthouse lawn November fifth from ten to three. I'm Ryan Norman for a peaceful protest. This is in the case of Jesse Butler. They're requesting a meet on the courthouse lawn from nine thirty to, or the application says nine thirty to three thirty.
And it has Max looked at this, you know, or from Zach, and it's what, Max looked at this. We don't have, do we have one in place really? I think we've ever had one in place, so.
Well, it's just the, okay, that location.
Just the form, we're just, okay, this is it, okay, I did not know we had this, so this is great, so. All right. Sheriff Harper, what are, say it doesn't become peaceful. What do we, your deputy is allowed to do because we'll probably have people there, correct? So what are we, do we need to have something in place in case it doesn't become peaceful? They try to approach or encroach or do whatever you're saying to make sure what I'm asking, what do I need to have in place before, since that would be, do what? Okay, all right. Okay, I just wanna make sure it was approached to me to make sure that we have something in place on, since it's, okay. All right. Need to look at this, uh, you saying?
May I all make a motion? Should we make a, make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve their peaceful protests for the use of courthouse lawn. Okay, on this, does it specify where? I did not, I think it says east side, correct? Is it sort of just.
It's just this thing courthouse lawn.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I was looking. This courthouse lawn is pretty big, so I wanna make sure that we clarify.
This just means that you like the courthouse.
Sheriff Harper, do we have, it just says courthouse lawn, because that's a pretty big area. Where we, do we want to put a, an area or just like around the entrance, East Garden area? Nothing on, on a sidewalk, say again, that's a public, public right of way anyway, so do we want to add that anywhere or? Matters, okay, all right, okay, I always wanna make sure I ask you, so.
Any other motions?
Make a motion to approve the use of the courthouse lawn November first, November fifth, my apologies, from ten AM to three PM for a peaceful protest. Say it.
Okay, all in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
So the amended, number three, discussion possible action, project approval letter bridge one zero eight zero five between Iowa tribe, the local home and board of commissioners, Payne County. This is down on Dino Road. So this is mine, and you guys will give them the plan and stuff for that bridge. But I'll, I'll make a motion to accept this approval letter. Iowa tribe is taking care of all this. It's just the deal that they do with one, they try to tweet us. Make a motion.
Say it.
Um, favor Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Roger Bush, yes. Okay, clerk, see, discussion possible action amended memorandum of agreement for District One between Green Energy Solutions LLC and the Board of Commissioners, Payne County, Oklahoma. Wanna talk about this, Brian? What this is? You wanna talk about what this is or?
Uh, it's just a language change.
Okay. And Max has accepted this? Do you know Max accepted this?
Can you ask or we can come back to it, did you do it?
Yeah, you can ask, can.
Can you come back to it?
Uh, we can have the, uh, match, uh.
Oh, yeah, you do that too. I see, we make a motion to approve on, we've done it before, waiting for, on approval from Max, to hear back from Zach and Max.
Hey, all in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Roger Bush, yes. Discussion possible, but the discussion is a Pink Valley radius. Sheriff Harper, do you know where the radius is?
Oh, um, still waiting on a few minor boards, but they're in progress, they're programming all the other radios and getting this, I suppose, radio.
I have something from Pierce, can I read that?
Sure.
Good. Uh, from Pierce Taylor, Payne County Area Management, since he'll be able to attend the meeting, he wanted to make sure it was put in. Records completed last week, Cushing and Yale finished testing the new radio. Rack installation continues, equipment rack delivered to Cushing and install starts soon. In progress this week, base station configuration at all sites, test radio is being set up for another, for other departments. Coverage testing remains on hold and is waiting on individual, individual. So, um, we came back and printed that off and get that to you if you want to have that for record, so he didn't even email it to me, so.
Okay, any, any rest, any rest agreement?
Is this, is this it? I think that's, it's yours. See, yes, okay. Brian?
Max has it approved.
Max has it approved.
Yes.
Or, um, I think this has to be the chairman signing the behalf of the board, so.
Any motion?
We'll make a, we'll have a.
I will amend my motion to amend it to our signature on something about chairman of the board.
I see.
All in favor, uh, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Uh, Roger Bush, yes. All right, but you have any rest, any rest agreement?
Yeah.
Removal on equipment items from inventory. Okay, either mine is resolutions twenty twenty five, three ninety two, ninety three, ninety four, ninety five, and ninety six. These are all sold on purple wave. And so all of the, these resolutions, very fast, how much they are, those titles and stuff. And then chairman has assigned the titles.
Correct.
Um, when I accept a motion on that.
Uh, make a motion to accept the, the, the resolution for disposal of equipments with the chairman signing the titles. For, I'm sorry, let me make sure, but the resolution three ninety two, uh, two oh five, three nine three, two zero two five, three nine four, two zero two five, three nine five, two zero two five, three nine six. All those canceled.
I see.
Okay, all in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Roger Bush, yes. Uh, appointment of requisition receiving officers, the only one I have is for Dr. Wright. Anything else? So. Do you have anybody on here for picking forms?
We have that, right?
We don't? Okay, all right, um, so it looks like they're keeping all the same, keep it on there. Brett Lunsford is the requisitioning officer, Lucas Andrew and Justin Neves is the receiving officers.
They could just be updating them.
I think it might be just the updating, okay. Okay. Call it, take a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the requisition and receiving officers for District Wright.
I see it.
Y'all favor Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Okay, catch up for me, Asia?
I am now.
Discussion possible to the fire department for your position request. I've got three, um, ones from Dr. Wright, fire, or, um. They didn't take out the engine, female swivel, adapters, storage cap, adapter. They cost like about five thousand dollars. And then they have another one.
I'm gonna put all this one to me.
Yeah. Obviously, some of the shut off, uh, hydrant, and now it's thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Oh, it's to the emergency fire equipment, both of these are the emergency fire equipment. And then Eagles Fire has one for Bulle, oh, for a hundred thirty five dollars.
I would just want them told that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's never told enough, so I don't wanna touch it.
Well, I can tell them that's okay.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't want to, see, that's Tyler, you guys, just wanna make sure, somebody besides me is told enough, because I'm not very good with math. You're good with math, Brian?
I do.
Yeah.
Anyway, oh, entertain a motion with the chairman of the sign on behalf of the board?
Make a motion to approve the fire department pre-proquisition requests with chairman signing on behalf of the board.
I see it.
Y'all in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Roger Bush, yes. Okay, purchase orders.
Yes.
Okay, take your time.
Okay, before you have a list and we're costing to pay eight hundred seventy one thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and seventy ninety cents.
The real blanket.
I need to, oh. That will be back, yes, blankets for November, three hundred thirty four thousand eight hundred sixty eight dollars and twelve cents. Do you want me to do payroll too?
Sure.
That's important.
It's, it's important today.
Okay, premiums, two hundred ninety five thousand seven hundred sixty six dollars and eighty four cents. Taxes, two hundred thirty eight thousand one oh eight and ninety cents. Payroll, nine hundred three thousand two hundred thirty five dollars and sixty cents. For a grand total for October payroll, one million four hundred thirty seven thousand one hundred eleven dollars and thirty three cents.
Can we do them all at one time or do we have to do them separately? Can you do that? Make a motion to approve, um, payroll and purchase orders and blanket or, on the, the, on the signature, correct?
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Roger Bush, yes. Any monthly reports of officers?
I do not have any.
Any publicly announced books from the board? Hey, any discussion possible action on industrial access permits or road crossings? Do you have any? I have two. One is for, they're both for land, trouble with oil and gas, one is on southwestern. Uh, just, uh, by Highway thirty three, and the other one's on East, not East Second, East Road, on the east side. Yeah.
Brian, it's working.
Thanks for the check.
Make a motion to approve the industrial access permits for crossings for D three.
I see it.
All in favor, Brian?
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Roger Bush.
Can I go on then?
Um. Yes, their number IND, which is for D three, two five zero three five three six. Do you have the other pre-requisition?
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, yeah. I'm gonna be pulled up together, sorry. All right, uh, any new business? All right, one minute, nine thirty. I gotta go. That will be first line of the report.
We don't really start until like January, we're in the hot season. Yeah. I'll be here signing, sir.
And he already signed.
Which way are we going?
So, work is built, display.
Out of the ramble possibility.
Everybody.
So, there's this for ninety-one thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. Okay, the, uh, bid is for ninety-one thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. And it has been signed and notarized.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Ninety-four thousand dollars and five hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. If I have any description? It has been signed and notarized. And, uh, Fire Department Construction is a hundred thirty-seven and a half dollars. It's been signed and notarized, uh, and they are fifty-seven thousand dollars, fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Okay, that lumber construction. Okay, it's been signed and notarized. Uh, their bid is a hundred and four thousand dollars each. Yeah, let's play the bids. Josh, you wanna review these and come back later?
Much later.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate that so much.
That was, sorry. No, it's hard, it's cold everywhere.
Yeah, I see it now.
It's hard.
Working, so they have to take it, take one person. We have the L P S, get that word again?
I mean, I will say to you, my hard words about you guys.
All right. Trying to pass the month.
Round of applause, of course. He goes back to the desk. Cause I'm right in it.
Not that I'm saying outside, but I would, it's a point you want to make.
They're coming out tomorrow.
So, on the forty, there's a W, four square, and two, they have a cord, and a stick. Yeah, it was, cause every while, it's, it's not doing that.
I think he does, hung it all in first. I put it here, then he, he hung it, he hung it all. Spark.
Well, you two, and that's what we're doing, playing. It's shocking, most of the jewelry.
Terrible, that it comes here, and Brad.
That's bad, and you know, he's scheduled.
Just one of my guys, yes.
That's when we saw that, we checked, we found him.
But that was at the same, I saw.
It's terribly, I don't, I don't, I don't comment.
Somebody said it was hot earlier, and I think they're pumped up there. Or somebody said. Right. It's blowing down, but it's also like it came down in a Fiesta. Well, it's a little crazy.
Oh, that's why the door stays open all this time.
Oh, yeah.
So. But that one right there was John and I just had to adjust at the closing speed. But now they came last week, the company, and addressed it all, the, the sensors. And now it's going up crazy and the front doors and the other, the holder doors will not properly shut. So I need to make sure you close them. And they've done a really good job. For real? All over by?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. When he says talent, I was like, wouldn't that be?
What? Oh, you got the progress is mine.
Okay, didn't know if I were around that far. I don't know if that for you.
He's coming across me and I'm way south. I'm like two miles, but how do we get three? What kind of car I get? I think that's probably the school, the street where he was. But maybe why?
I think he, uh, fifty-six, I know fifty-six and seventy. The north side still is something like. Used to be.
I'm, I'm just, I'm between eighty and ninety second.
I know where you're.
I mean, I think he thought it was a great idea.
I just could have like, that seems really far over that side, but I know that would call a category.
I think he's west, western, I think.
Okay.
I think seventeen, uh, one seventy, he's west to one seventy-seven, I got that.
Yeah, there's. He mentioned to me, it was like by the. You know, that boat rental store, like they have four boats like there in that second. I think he found me that area.
On the rear stand from that spec right there.
The electric bomb.
I'm sure I can get my house control coming in. Yeah, what's that?
That's the rest of them, yeah, they had a lot. That would do.
What one were you asking about, Robert?
Christian Martin, question on that. Um, last time the sheriff's question. Would tell you the series thing for fifteen hour.
Radio tower. Radiant.
Series.
We're gonna need to do a presentation on Monday, which is about four o'clock, where you trip to D on that TV register. That's why I have this TV right there, so you need to work on that. And then, and the mission meeting on Monday, so.
Assuming you have a voice back on Monday.
Well, you don't hear really talking, so you can do some managers just saying. Yeah. So, just, just FYI. She'll make sure you're aware of that, so you can prepare for the weekend and stuff.
She's just going to pray on that.
Yep, oh, she will, she's awesome.
Yes, I mean, that'd be great. I almost forgot about that one, actually. I'm sure you did, but.
I guess somebody called that one, right, where I'm sleeping.
Okay, he does. For a second. And then was they, um, what, one P O B? Okay, so I'll back to.
Pretty wild, they can do that for that. Probably do a bit. I don't know.
All right, everybody on the here, we will have some of those.
Oh, I never changed the door.
Are you going to Echo? You going to Echo today?
Have you ever been to Echo? Oh, really?
It was, uh, about thirteen years ago.
I think I went there yesterday.
My brother-in-law, what if our little mom's commissioner, could ask him what county that is. They live in, do you rent, what county is that?
Think I might look them.
Probably, yeah, yep. Other word.
My sister's cousin.
Remembering you done sign.
I forgot my sister's name. Blevins. Lloyd Blevins. Wow, sorry, I forgot my sister's name. I'm tired.
I wonder if they made it up. It's none of our people. They live, they're from that way, known around that Paul Blevins.
She's, she's a, no, I agree, it's that, um. Yep.
Why didn't you post something like just go back, what did I do? What are you doing?
Uh, all time after we're out of session.
Okay.
Go ask a lot of me today, okay?
Sure.
How to be simple. Simple stuff. Today. Where in the Echo, like where, where? Oh, yeah. I went to the Echo building. Do you expect this hardly?
Oh, you need to go, they did it.
Oh, have they?
They did a lot of painting.
And it's like this little corner. Building, it's tall, it's more than one story, but like, well, the first time I was like. I was expecting like this massive, oh, huge, huge, kind of like. It's like quiet a little bit.
Well, you know, when you fix something up, cause they take terrible, and somebody's like, you say.
Yeah, and they have a big sized conference room. They used to. But, yeah, you would think that it was, uh, huge, cause they're stolen. Yeah, I was like, huh.
You sound, uh, better sound lower.
Yeah, sorry if I did, it was an accident, I'm sorry, I thought I did my accident.
One. Okay, we can call, um, I had to call as well, my dude, his group. Call city. Cause Tracy.
You work on these, I'm just passing back to me. On this one? Can I just mark her out, or do you want to mark her out, does she sound high or does she sound?
Yeah.
We couldn't.
After a while, we all.
Going to the mileage, I was like, what am I doing here on the floor? Going to mileage.
That's it, so, um, I'm.
I know they see that I surrender.
I know we are too, too. Okay, I'm, I'm, I can't. I sent out.
You say it's a store, Bill?
One copy, the employees and said, hey, I said, make sure you finish, and then I said, I'm like, have you started? And I tried to call the officials, no, just to kind of help.
Should we call the house? Sure. Wow, they are, I'm sure this, this is a big building.
Like casually.
Do I have one of these for the courthouse? Did I miss it? The water bill? The water bill?
Do you, um, is that supposed to?
It is, I just didn't know, I'm trying to look at, I'm trying to compare since I've replaced all of that. Sprinkler system. I've replaced. I just wanted to, I can look it up in there, it's not a bit, I just didn't see it come through. I wanted to see if it went up or down, because I'm trying to fix all the water lines or the sprinklers. I didn't replace them all, but they had leaks, I want to see if it's going to go down or less, or. And then I've got it under control a little bit better. I don't know. Ben?
Anytime he's seen or touched? A lot. Yeah, oh, yeah. She really enjoyed his.
Oh, and then it is better, but we can't figure out how to get it, maybe get it, to get a hold of it, so.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You, you're up?
Second.
Hey, I'll tell you for Brian.
Yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Not too much, yes. But I'm gonna stay here all day. I know, yeah, that's not right, I know you're gonna. Okay. I'll sign everything, stand it all, maybe you want you a copy of that too, or just is that, I can walk it back, get it, or do you care?
Just say it.
I'll fill that. I'll fill that.
I appreciate you guys doing that, and that's awesome, but that's, that's great.
I get.
Yes.
I've never been.
You know, everyone invited to Echo? Well, when I was in the commissioner's office by the day, I would go and it's, I mean. You know, it's not like fly the changes or anything, but if there's things going on, it's a good thing you're here.
More for like the roses for people, I mean, with the visitors and stuff, I mean, that didn't proclaim up to you. But, I mean, like, they can just check in with a lot of the different visitors and stuff, and whatever, I mean, there's railroad yard, there's, you know, you have cat, uh, down there.
He gets swag.
Yeah, all of them, there's all kinds of swag stuff, I guess. So. Cats, and.
It is good to be the better.
A lot of dinners there.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
And it's sometimes the agenda items, uh, are good, I mean, it's good to see ones on the agenda, so it might be something that protects everybody if that's going on.
One of the best ones that I like is in August, they did a safety conference, and they started taking people the last few years that, uh. I might have been in it longer than I want now, because I didn't always go a little bit.
Yeah.
Down there, but, um, they usually have a couple of commissioners that get up and then told what, some of the best safety pieces that have happened, I mean, some of the fatalities and what exactly happened, I mean. To learn.
From their states or.
Oh, man, I just sit there following, listen, I, this one, this one. The foreman, they hired his son. And his son was about eighteen, nineteen years old, and he go in front of this truck, and the dad, the foreman and the dad was with this truck, and the dad accidentally went on a holy. It, it, oh, yeah. And he ended up, later happened a heart attack, though, that deal, and his wife had some kind of, like, cancer, something died. And the youngest kid was left, and that mistress that I just described.
Yeah.
He's, I just don't ever, it is, it was just some freaky deal, that something happened, and the victim, he went over.
Oh.
I mean, that's just. And the other one is last time the bulldozer. The guy was in the bulldozer, and he was, he was out western Oklahoma, way out the middle from nobody. And, um, they were working on his cell phone tower, and he was over on this hill, that they went off this ledge, with him involved with him in that. And he was laying underneath it, he said his son had got him iPhone launch that he did not like, he didn't like technology, he had a phone leak. Unfortunately, the last person he called was his boss. And he finally got, because he was having troubles, he didn't get his hands to work it, because he was, apparently it was laying on him. And then they had a hard time finding him to get there, and they had to bring equipment to get it off of him, and he said that that cell phone tower, he said, they wouldn't have any idea, they'll just figure he was off, you know, they would.
Doing the same.
Oh, yeah, he's lucky he lived, and I think he lost foot with his legs.
He lived?
He did live through it, they tell it, yes.
Wow.
I mean, I mean, it's just, and he's like, it's not, they're not trying to be careful, things happen, and it's, things do happen.
But, I had read this.
Yeah, it's great, but, well, just the deal of a day with John, and it had nothing to do, John didn't do anything wrong. That's enough, I mean, that, you know, whenever you're in forties like that, it's awful.
Did you have some light written, Sanger Road yesterday?
Probably.
Um, I was, took my cats to the vet, and.
Oh.
That's where I drove by them.
Brad was probably up there.
I was on, uh, Sanger's, uh, emergency and Sanger going.
Yes, because they're complaining about Sanger down there.
So I, I just go there and just saw them, and I was like, I always look for like, if it has D one or D three, or if I didn't see paint counter, I was like, that's gotta be one of.
I was on the.
My cat goes on that work. Yeah.